Meeting of the Woodford County Fiscal Court to order. Madam Treasurer Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Squire Taylor?
Here.
Squire Gentry?
Here.
Squire Varner?
Here.
Squire Carl?
Here.
Squire Downey?
Here.
Squire Blackford?
Present.
Squire Gill?
Here.
Squire Brown?
Thank you. Offering our invocation tonight is Randy Nation, retired pastor of Journey Church. Might I turn on the mic? Pastor Nation, and welcome.
Let's pray together. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening and just for this assembly, Lord. God, we're grateful for men and women who love you and love the county, Lord, and enough to give up their time and make decisions that are in the best interest of all, Lord. God, I know each person here wants us to be the very best place in the world to live, and I'm grateful that they make decisions each month that make that possible. So I pray, Lord, for your gift of discernment, encouragement, just to honor their time, their decisions. May the conversations be civil and encouraging to one another, Lord, and may your will be done. We know that you rule over us all. So, Lord, pray your blessing on this meeting and all the proceedings. May you be glorified. I pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. If you're able, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. So we do have a Good of the County program for the good of the county, the greatest county in all the universe, Woodford County, also known as the home of champions. So if I could, I'd like to invite our special guests, the Woodford County 7th Grade Champion Football Team, to the courtroom. This year, the Woodford County 7th Grade Football Team has once again demonstrated outstanding dedication, teamwork, and excellence on and off the field. With pride, determination, this team earned their third consecutive conference title in three years. We just honored the great Addie Moore for her three-peat, and now we honor the Woodford County 7th Grade Football Team for their remarkable accomplishment of a three-peat that reflects their hard work, their discipline, and their dedication, committed to be the best they can be every season. Throughout the year, these athletes displayed unwavering resilience and sportsmanship, finishing the season as conference champions. Their performance and their competitive spirit also earned them a well-deserved spot in the state playoffs, showcasing their talents as one of the best teams in Kentucky. We recognize and commend every player, coach, parent, and supporter who contributed to this exceptional season. Your achievements, young men, bring great pride to Woodford County and your family, and your continued success sets a powerful example for the future of Woodford County Middle School and the future of our community. I'd like to recognize the 7th Grade Football Team. We have DJ Huff, Kason Waters, Davis Stakeland, and if you are in attendance, please rise; Nolan Osborne, Jace Wintec, Carter Blackburn, Amerian Reed, Angel King, Joby Gooseland, Camion Mitchell, Hunter Hodge, Jaden Adams, Keen Ford, Mason Ritchie, Hunter Anderson, excuse me, JJ Escalani, Peyton Leest, Trip Lawson, Jomar Perez, Joe Nathan Brown, John Louis Varner, Landon Baldwin, Alex Baldwin, Owen Gordon, Sammy Weiss, and Hudson Huber. Ladies and gentlemen, your conference champions. And if I could, have you guys come over to the banner, and I'd like to invite Coach of the Year, Dave Thomas, to say a few words on behalf of the team. So, coaches and players, if you could come over to the banner. And Coach Thomas, thank you for getting this together to recognize and honor your team on their third consecutive championship. Thanks for your leadership. Would you mind to introduce your coaches and also say a few words about your team?
Sure. Evcader Schrapp Harvey, Martez Davis, Alan Smith. So Chris Tranci wasn't able to be with us, or Chris Garrison and Coleman Sparks. So really, really, super grateful for this group, especially. I'm still unsure how in the world I managed to win the Regional Coach of the Year award, given I was out for half the season and hospitalized for 10 days in the middle of all of it. But it really is just a testament to the character of the coaches and the kids. You know, we certainly appreciate all the community support, and, you know, it's... We challenge these guys day in and day out to get better every day and trying to get them ready to ultimately play for Coach Johnson at the high school level and to continue to be competitive. So really, really appreciate you all taking the opportunity to recognize their hard work. So I'm just a small pawn in the big piece, so.
Well, we thank you for your leadership. Coaches, thank you all for your leadership as well. And, you know, Dave, I would say the good Lord had a plan for you, and He put you on the sidelines and sidelined you for a little while for the ultimate benefit of our team. So players, coaches, parents, congratulations on your conference championship and representing Woodford County so well. I have the opportunity to present you on behalf of the fiscal court with this recognition of achievement. We have individual ones for each of you that we will get to you, but now we'll take a photo, if that's all right with everybody?
Members of the fiscal court, if you will join us?
Come on, coach.
Dirt, Chris, at last.
Hold in here. I mean, we were walking along, I can't help it.
All right, you guys look at this in there.
I wouldn't know Scott White couldn't make it yet. Thank you, Coach.
champions and the home of champions. We also have another special guest with us, and I'd like to welcome the Director of Kentucky Emergency Management, Mr. Eric Gibson is with us. Mr. Gibson, Director Gibson, if you wouldn't mind to approach the podium. Lot of excitement in the courthouse.
Yeah, those young men are excited tonight, and that's a terrific accomplishment for them to win that. And it's so funny to see the difference in ages, you know, how they're all in the same grade, but there's so many growing spurts on them, I guess. Well, thank you all for having me before the fiscal court today. My name's Eric Gibson. I'm the Director of Kentucky Emergency Management, and I work for the governor every day, taking care of all of our disaster stuff. And I'm able to be accompanied by a lot of great team members, and you all have one of those here in the county. And Drew Chandler was recently recognized as the International Association of Emergency Managers. I guess he's the Director of the Year, and what I would say that is, that's an international award, so it's not just a Kentucky award. He was recognized in Louisville last week. I went down to the ceremony where they recognized his accomplishments, and it says so much for the work that he does here in your county. I would tell you that you all have a really excellent emergency manager here. When we're talking about the buyout programs that he's working through, the disaster response that he's coordinating with your local officials, your sheriff, your fire departments, your EMS, it all comes together, and Drew does a great job doing that, coordinating with all your officials, and then being that liaison back to the state. So tonight, I just came by to provide him one little letter of recognition. I spoke with the governor last week, and he recognized Director Chandler as the Kentucky, Team Kentucky All-Star of the Week, and to follow up with that, he just wrote a nice letter and wanted me to present it to him tonight at the fiscal court. It says, "Dear Director Chandler, on behalf of the Commonwealth, I join your family, friends, and colleagues in congratulating you on being named the 2025 Emergency Manager of the Year by the International Association of Emergency Managers. Through some of the worst disasters in our history, your work and commitment have helped make Woodford County the city of ourselves and the Commonwealth of Kentucky better prepared, safer, and ready to respond to disaster. It is fitting that Commonwealth recognizes this great achievement. Congratulations again, and thank you for your dedication to Woodford County and the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Sincerely, Andy Beshear." Thank you very much. You all do have a good director, and I really appreciate his help in our office. We stay very busy with the disasters that we have, and he's always a very counted and trusted resource for me. So thank you all very much for letting me borrow him.
Well, thank you, Director Gibson. We want to say it means a lot that you took time out of your evening to come to our fiscal court meeting. You know, we know that Kentucky, along with Woodford County, has been through so much in so few years, so we appreciate your leadership, your team's leadership. I know it's a team effort. That's what we see with our emergency management department. I did have the opportunity to attend the conference with the emergency management team, and the one thing that I can say is that we are always so proud of Director Chandler and his hard work. But Kentucky and Kentucky's emergency management program and team shone so well at that conference. They were recognized multiple times. Scott County's Director as well got some recognition, and when the Kentucky delegation was recognized at the conference, you could tell that amongst other emergency managers across the state and the nation and the world, we are viewed as a professional and accomplished organization. So thank you. And, Mr. Gibson, you are more than welcome to stay, but you are also more than welcome to be excused.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, for being here. I just want to give a big shout out to Rick Wade for all these last-minute audibles before the meeting is started. He got the banner up, he got the additional chairs set, he just never stops working, and he's doing a great job. Thank you, Rick.
Does he have sleep?
I hope so. I hope he does at some point in time. Let me... Let's see, Squire Taylor, did you have something? No, okay. We do have a public comment, and I do believe we have individuals wishing to address the court or the public, and so I would offer the opportunity to Mr. Mansfield, who I recognized and mentioned to me that he had a public comment. If you don't mind, just state your name, and the floor is yours, sir.
James Mansfield. I live south of the Bluegrass Parkway, nine miles on Troy Pike. We raise sheep and sell lamb for a living. We've sold fresh lamb to Whole Foods markets every week for 16 years. We have lamb in five states in our stores. So I love Woodford County. We moved here six years ago. We were farming elsewhere, but we're happy we lived here, moved here. I was elected precinct chair of H8 by the Democrats for better worth here lately, and we started holding monthly potlucks as a way for meet the neighbors and get to know people, feel like we have more of a sense of community, we know people around us. So we've been doing that every month. The fifth one was last Sunday. So I asked those people, "What are your concerns living, you know, south of the Parkway and south of Woodford?" And the group concerns, the top ones were farmland preservation, housing developments sprawl, lack of high-speed internet, and traffic on narrow, dangerous roads. Basically, people want to keep it rural. They like it the way it is. We don't want it to turn into Justman County. The fact that there are 1,700-something lots approved that could be built on is really a concern. I mean, you can say, "Well, they aren't being built on," but they could be in the future. So, you know, my wife and I are going to... We're close to putting our farm in a conservation easement. It'll be a farm forever, but I wonder what it's going to be like in 20 years or 50 years, you know, if we can't slow down. So I watched a video of your February 25 meeting last night at 3:00 a.m. But anyways, and I listened to people talking about the in-family conveyance, and, you know, they said it was really important for their family to be able to do that, to keep people together, and I understand that. I respect that. But I also think... But I understand that lamb's expensive, and it's not getting any cheaper. But it seems like a compromise is needed, you know. Can we keep the in-family conveyance but limit the number of parcels created? You know, only... I'm sorry. Doing nothing lets the future consequences get worse, and I think the current proposal might be a step in the right direction. I really thank you for your hard work trying to get this right. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Thank you. We will note that for the record. I would open the floor for anybody else who has any additional public comment? Anybody else here to seek to offer a public comment?
Yeah, I've got a public comment. My name is Steve Mullins. I live in the county. Been here about 22 years, have property in agricultural land in the county as well as residential land, considered in the county, but it's more in the city than it is anything else. But I actually have a few issues. One, the growth, I understand by attending the planning and zoning meeting, the most recent one, that there was a study that was commissioned to be done to see about the growth, how it's going to affect traffic, schools, sewer systems, and we're talking about the city, a lot of the city development. My understanding is that that report has not come back, but yet there's a push going forward, so it seems like the cart's being put before the horse, right? As far as the agricultural, the in-family conveyance, which Mr. Mansfield spoke about, I understand there's a lot of ideas being tossed around, and nothing's firm, I suppose, right? One of the issues that I see, and I've got farmland, I have no intent in doing an in-family conveyance. I want to control the land, right? I don't want it... Even if it's passed down generations, I want it to stay as it is. But I had a question in regards to the accessory dwelling structures. There's provision in here that talks about it needing... Requiring to be... Not to exceed 50% of the floor area of the principal residence. So I question that. Is that applying to tenant housing as far as workers? So I just want to throw that out there. I have a question in regards to that. I'm not understanding if that's applicable to that. Someone brings in workers, have a large farm bring in workers, you know, under the visa program. They're required to provide them housing. Where's that housing come from? So just had a few comments about that. Any direction you guys can give me on that? I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mullins. And the way that we handle public comment is we allow all comment first and we listen only?
Sure.
And then we can respond and give you other information as you requested, either later in the meeting or at a different time?
Exactly.
But I would say that for the question...
One other thing...
Yes, sir, go ahead.
...is I've heard about, you know, the in-family conveyance, and like I said, I'm not planning on doing any in-family conveyances. I don't want that. But I've heard numbers thrown around, but yet nothing solid, right? I think the planning and zoning meeting, there was a map that was put up, three different maps with just colors on it, which one dated back to 1960, I believe, and the others were more current. It really had no explanation as far as actual numbers, as far as the... How many in-family conveyances are possible and how many have actually been done versus how many have actually been sold out of the family? I haven't seen any of those numbers. I encourage you guys to get those numbers and share them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins. Is there anyone else who has any desire to make a public comment this evening? Seeing none, public comment is closed? And let me just say that I think some of the questions that you had could be best answered by our planning director, but the current in-family conveyance language and the changes to the text amendment for Articles 2 and 7 have come back to the fiscal court, but the full record of comments from... That were taken from citizens has not made it to us yet. I know that the planning office is working on that. Our goal would be to probably have this in committee at our next meeting, which is Tuesday, December 9. And I do believe, Mr. Mullins, that there is a plan to provide additional information along the lines that you've requested and have that publicly available and also on our website and other areas for everyone to access. So I do believe that would be the plan. I will say that there is a scenario where the record does not make it to us by the December 9 meeting. I don't like to proceed, Mr. County Attorney, without the full record before the court and the opportunity to review that. But I do know that members of the fiscal court have been working on this and following it closely, so it may be something that we could proceed if the record came in pretty close proximity to the meeting. But that is the plan for that specific issue that was of discussion in two of the public comments. Thank you all. Thank you for your attendance and offering a public comment this evening. Approval of the minutes? We have the special minutes for November 12. Are there any additions or corrections thereon? Seeing none, are there any objections to approving same? Seeing that there are no objections, I'll approve the minutes without objection. The Contracts and Leases Committee met prior to this meeting, and we took up the lease for this pitch. That was unanimously recommended by the Contracts and Leases Committee for approval of the full fiscal court. I want to thank Mr. Greg Grisham and Parks and Recreation Director Rich Pictor for helping us, and also Mr. County Attorney for your work on that lease. That is, before us, upon a unanimous recommendation of the committee, is there a motion to adopt same for the fiscal court? Motion by Squire Varner, second by Squire Gentry. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that...
It was a aye.
There's a nay?
It was an aye.
It was an aye. Thank you, Squire Gentry. That motion carries unanimously. We also discussed in the committee briefly that the Woodford County Fair Association lease is still on our docket, and we're working with them on that. And Squire Taylor presented the draft agreement for the Crittenen Cabin. I have seen some information about the Crittenen Cabin. It was online, and I want to just make sure folks know that the Woodford County Historical Society are the caretakers of that cabin, along with some other organizations. It was moved, it was dismantled as part of a grant process. It was moved to the county park, and it will be reassembled at the county park. Squire Taylor, do you want to touch on any of that before we move on?
That was a great summary. It's been a long time trying to find a great home for this historic cabin and excited to have the location and resources to be able to do so.
Thank you, Squire Taylor. That is the sum of the committee work that we did, and I'll move on to reports. Reports of the treasurer. Madam Treasurer?
Tonight's balance is $14,232,089.50.
Thank you. Do you may have any questions for the treasurer? Seeing none, I'd like to recognize Director Drew Chandler for a flood recovery update.
Thank you, Judge. If the court would recall, we started down the path with a USDA buyout program, and we were ready to kick that off pending a meeting with the USDA representatives, and due to the federal government shutdown, that meeting was canceled. We were able to get it rescheduled and had that meeting last Thursday, and we're live. There's an information page on the county government website. Judge Kay and I recorded a video, which is on the website as of this afternoon, launching the program, providing the initial steps for the property owners, which begins with them submitting a voluntary letter of interest notification, which they can download on the website or come here to the courthouse, and we can print it off for them to collect their information. The USDA program is highly structured, so each property transaction will progress through the same timeline regardless of any complicating factors that may exist on a per-property basis. So our documentation on the other end will be consistent. There is an opportunity for us as we get to the actual acquisition phase for the properties that reach that step, for the USDA to front us the purchase price, so we're not having to float that money and wait on reimbursement if we so choose, but we don't have to. There's going to be two waves in this program. The first wave is the 37 properties that we included that had expressed interest or were adjacent or a property that we thought would be interested if the program came available. And there are a few... I'm sorry, those 37 were included as part of our initial application to the USDA. The USDA is willing to amend our agreement, the one that you all had previously approved, to add additional properties to the list if they're not already in the first wave. But to the best of our knowledge, everybody that came to us and said, "We'll hear what you've got to say." you've got to say," is included and eligible. Judge, if I'm leaving any key points that are pertinent to the magistrates, please let me know. I guess the, after the notice of voluntary interest, which we've had some come in already that quick, less than 24 hours, we will work to get a qualified professional to start the title search. Sort of parallel to that, we have an environmental impact assessment that will need to be done. I'm still getting the quotes. We'd like to spend that money locally if possible to see if there's anybody that is, meets all the USDA's requirements for that part. Again, that form, the first step is on the website, and Channel 27 picked that story up, so that's circulating in their news as well, and we're really excited to launch it and have this option available for the survivors.
Thank you, Director Chandler. Yeah, this is one of the largest policies and programs that will come out of our flood recovery, and it's going to be, it's going to change the floodplain areas where we, regardless of what happens in the future, it just doesn't have the ability to impact us the way that it did. So I'd open up the floor for any questions for Director Chandler about our buyout program as it is currently proceeding. Squire Gill.
Do you know how many of the 35 have agreed to take part in the buyout?
So the initial wave of 37 that we've been awarded the contract for, every one of those properties, with a few exceptions, had expressed interest in a mitigation program. It is a voluntary interest, so they could, they can back out at the table with the closing paperwork in front of them if they so choose. Hopefully, throughout the process, there are other exit ramps that would prevent that scenario from unfolding, but that is a possibility, and that's why the voluntary interest form is the first step. It gives them access to the information and notifies us in a formal way that they are interested in proceeding before we incur any costs with the professional services.
And I would just kind of put a finer point on that, that it was, those that expressed interest were very aware and educated about the process, so I think their interest was probably more than just seeing what option is, they were probably truly looking at the buyout.
And there's a few on that list that we know that participate. Their interest was more for, and this was before the USDA program came available, looking at traditional FEMA-sponsored mitigation activities where a property owner could receive grant funds to assist with elevating a structure. The USDA option is only a buyout, so we know of those 37, a few will not be acquired. In our history with the buyout program, and if memory serves me correctly, was around 2016 or 2017, we set off to buy six properties and wound up with two. One of those, they just quit communicating with us. One family had unrealistic expectations for what fair market value meant. Another family said, you know, "We can't imagine living anywhere else," you know, regardless of what the number is. So I don't have a good sense of how many will proceed, I think, to our advantage and from a public safety standpoint, to buy as many as the grant funds will allow.
Thank you, Director Chandler. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, great work, thank you.
Judge, one other thing, Saturday was our deadline to document our damages with FEMA. So we had, back in September, what FEMA calls a recovery scoping meeting, and that's where FEMA officials from their different program areas come in and listen to us tell the story about what happened during the flood and how we responded. From that meeting, we had a limited window to document everything possible that we consider a loss that's uninsured, and then we begin the recovery process from that. So that deadline did occur on Saturday, we feel really good about everything that got turned in. There's, it's a substantial amount of money, but we don't know, some of the actual dollar amounts aren't yet known for everything because some of the work is ongoing. If you have any questions about that, please feel free to reach out.
Thank you, Director Chandler. Anybody have any questions while we're here? Seeing none. Any other department or agency wish to give the court an update? Seeing none, move on to the general orders and unfinished business. I will have some board appointments for the court to consider at our next meeting, which will be the final meeting of the year, and most of those are year-end appointments. The Johnson Controls Contract is before you for the detention center, that's in a renewal in the amount of $1,349.76 for a one-year term. Is there a motion to approve that renewal?
Motion.
Motion by Squire Downey.
Second.
Second by Squire Gill. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries. Claims the bills to be paid are before you, are there any questions or comments on any of the bills to be paid? Seeing none, are there any objections to same?
I have a question.
Squire Gill, yes ma'am.
On the bank cards, there are a lot of tools that go through there. I remember a long time ago, the request was made that those tools be inventoried and marked, "Property of Woodford County Fiscal Court." Do you know if that's been done?
I think you'd have to speak to each individual department and agency, but yes, I believe that there is efforts to inventory.
I have one vehicle, two inventory done, and we're working on the second.
So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on any of the bills to be paid? Seeing none, are there any objections to any of the bills to be paid? Also seeing no objection, bills will be paid without objection. I need a motion to ratify the November 17th email approval of the sheriff's visa in the amount of $315.38 and the PNC Bank claim in the amount of $15,576.86 as presented. Motion by Squire Blackford, second by Squire Gentry. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. The transfers are prepared for your approval. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Squire Carl, second by Squire Downey. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, to the transfers, signify by saying nay. The transfers are approved. This is a bittersweet personnel order. On this personnel order, it does reflect the retirement of the great Bo Wilson, who is going to retire as road supervisor from the Woodford County Road Department. Bo wanted me to share that he is undergoing some health issues, and he would ask that everyone respect his privacy, him and his family's privacy at this time. But I've told Bo that for all the great work that he has done in service to Woodford County as road supervisor and his service to our community, that we have plans to honor and recognize his achievements. But he has made the decision to retire, and it will be effective at the end of this month, which is just a few days away. And in that spirit and in that vein, once we approve the personnel order, I will ask that we open and advertise the road supervisor position for the Woodford County Fiscal Court. So I would entertain a motion to approve the personnel order as presented.
Motion.
Motion by Squire Gentry, second by Squire Carl. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries. And I would entertain a motion to open the road supervisor position and to advertise that and begin the hiring process. Motion by Squire Gentry, second by Squire Carl. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that motion carries unanimously. I just want Bo to know that we, again, we appreciate him, we understand that he is a humble, humble man, he doesn't want any recognition and praise, but he deserves it, he's done a lot of great work for Woodford County, but we, most importantly, we care about his health and safety and that of his family, so we wish him well and we send him our thoughts and prayers. Moving on to the proposed second reading of the 20th Supplement of Code of Ordinances, that'd be ordinance 25-18. I need a motion to approve second reading of same. Motion by Squire Blackford, second by Squire Varner. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. Mr. County Attorney, sir.
Yes, Judge, this would be a summary second reading of this ordinance enacting and adopting the 20th Supplement to the Code of Ordinances of the County of Woodford, Kentucky, whereas American Legal Publishing Corporation of Cincinnati has completed that supplement, being ordained by the fiscal court that the 20th Supplement to our Code of Ordinances as submitted by American Legal Publishing Corporation is adopted as if set out in this ordinance. This being a second reading, this ordinance is final, although it does need to be published in summary form within 30 days.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney.
Thank you, Judge.
Moving on to new business, we need to have the proposed first reading of the Budget Amendment Number Four, that'd be ordinance 25-19. That realizes $1.1 million in additional receipts for the FD-15 funds for the Payne's Depot Bridge project. We realize these funds in an effort so that we can proceed with this project when necessary. So is there a motion to have the first reading of said ordinance?
Motion.
And the second by Squire Brown. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. Mr. County Attorney, sir.
Yes, Judge, this would be a first reading of this fiscal court budget amendment. As you pointed out, the budget for the current fiscal year is amended to increase our receipts based on these Payne's Depot Bridge FD-15 funds in the amount of $1,110,877. Our appropriations likewise will be amended by that amount to reflect the $1,110,877 to be appropriated for this project. As being a first reading, we do need to have a second reading since it is budget amendment. We'll do that at our first, or at our, I guess, January meeting, yeah, our first meeting in January.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney.
Thank you, Judge.
I'd like to move on to an important item of business, this is in relation to the Laurland Estates. I know we do have Squire Jackie Brown with us, and he's very well, we're well aware of this transaction that is taking place. So Laurland Estates is not a road adopted into the county road system. However, the developer, the HOA, have done everything in their power to prepare the road for, to ready it to be able to bring into the county road system. The last possible action is to pave their road to the specifications of the Woodford County Road System and the road supervisor, Bo Wilson. I want to thank Bo Wilson for reviewing the specifications before the paving was made. Laurland Estates has a homeowners association, Mr. Tim Grimes is the representative of that association. They met and came to the conclusion that they wanted to hire and enter into an agreement with Mago Construction to do the paving for Laurland Estates. That paving was done in the amount of $57,929.55, and that paving has been done. The way that our ordinance sets up the development, the developer of Laurland's estate put into bond a amount for this road paving. We have in our current CD arrangement, Madam Treasurer, in excess of the required amount of $57,929.55. So we have the full amount in bond that we can release to the Laurland Estates HOA to pay for the paving that has occurred, and that is what we need to do. So the first thing is, is that I would entertain a motion to authorize and release the bond funds paid to the Woodford County Fiscal Court in the amount of $57,929.55 for the actions, including paving, to bring that road up to the county road system standards. Is there a motion?
Make motion, Brown.
Thank you, Squire Brown, there is a motion to release those funds to Laurland Estates HOA for the payment of this action. Are there any questions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
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 Oh, is that a second from you, Squire Varner?
I'll do the second, yes.
There is a motion and a second. Are there any questions now? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that motion carries. I need to, I need to also, Squire Brown, are you able to turn your camera on there?
Help me see you, Judge.
I just want to make a clarification that if he can do that, then we will accept his motion thereon.
I'm trying, but I ain't having no luck. Can you see me now?
No.
No, sir.
Well, for some reason, I can't get it on, Judge.
That's okay, that's all right.
You can do it a different ways if you need to.
We may do that in an effort, in an effort just to assure, I mean, I think we can all know for certainty that that is Squire Jackie Brown on the other end of the line.
Any questions?
I hope it's not another one of me.
They only clone the best, I guess. Well, then, let me, let me ask, just for safe sake, a motion that would mirror the motion made by Squire Brown, just to cover our bases. Motion by Squire Gentry, second by Squire Varner. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. So I want to just have some other routine Laurland Estates motions, just to make sure that in the event, we want to move forward with adopting them into the county road system, that everything is in order. So we've issued the release of the funds to Laurland Estates and the amount for the paving, and that, that we authorize the judge executive to sign any and all documents related to the release of the funds for the paving for Laurland Estates. Is there a motion? Motion by Squire Blackford, and second by Squire Gentry. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. I'd also entertain a motion for the county, for the judge executive and the county attorney to work with Laurland Estates Homeowners Association to make sure everything is in order for them to be, for that road to be adopted into the county road system. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion by Squire Downey, second by Squire Blackford. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Aye.
That motion carries. And then finally, Mr. County Attorney, if it's appropriate, and you can answer before I have a motion, I'd entertain a motion to direct and authorize the county attorney to draft an ordinance adopting Laurland Estates, the road in the Woodford County Road System, contingent upon all of the other requirements being met.
Yeah, and our new road supervisor is going to have to give you the particulars, dimensions that are going to put in the, to put in the ordinance, but yes.
Well, and Mr. County Attorney, that was the reason for the prior motion, they were working together to make sure all that was in order. Just as an effort to move that along, I would entertain that motion for the county attorney to be permitted to draft the ordinance to adopt it into the road system. Motion by Squire Gentry. Second by Squire Varner. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, and that motion carries. I will say, when I mentioned that about road supervisor Bo Wilson, and we're talking about a county road system, the interim department head right now is Scott Dean, who is the second-in-command as head of the garage, is head of maintenance. So we'll move on to a vehicle surplus from the Planning Commission for a 2014 Jeep Compass, authorize the sale of that on GOV deal. Jeep Compass, authorize the sale of that on GovDeals.
Motion.
Motion by Squire Gill, second by Squire Carl. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Aye.
And that motion carries unanimously. We also, uh, the coroner's office wants to recommend surplus, the Toshiba copier as electronic waste and authorize the disposal of same to the recycling solid waste center. I need a motion for same. Motion by Squire Varner.
Second.
Second by Squire Gill. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And that motion carries unanimously. Also, um, the copier at the coroner's office, the one that's being surplus, is out of, uh, commission. They're going to need to enter into a lease agreement. We don't have that for your approval, but I would entertain a motion upon the review of the fiscal court, the county attorney and the judge executive to approve the lease agreement between the county coroner's office and Xerox, and Xerox or another, uh, provider as presented and allow for email approval of same. Motion by Squire Carl.
Second.
Second by Squire Downey. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries. I really like that, um, I'm really without Jordan here, just giving you a lot of the, a lot of the good motions. Madam Treasurer Clerk, is there any other item or does any member of the fiscal court have any other item to come up forward that's on new business? Yes, Squire Gill, you recognize?
Um, will there be a second reading of the fire ordinance that we did last? Is that next?
We advertise that for the December meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Just as a matter of, of caution, um, we did have the motion for the budget amendment was made by Squire Brown and, uh, just out of an abundance of caution without him being able to be on camera, is there a motion to approve same? Motion by Squire Carl, second by Squire Varner. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Aye.
That motion carries. Mr. County Attorney? I think we can adopt your subsequent reading of same. All right. Seeing no other new business to come before the court announcements, uh, Squire Taylor?
None, just happy Thanksgiving everyone.
Thank you. Squire Carl?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
That's it.
Squire Varner, sir.
Uh, happy Thanksgiving and, uh, we're going to miss you Bo. Thanks.
Yeah.
Happy Thanksgiving. Again, congratulations to Drew and, uh, Bo's going to be greatly missed. Uh, hopefully we can find somebody to fill those shoes.
Absolutely. Uh, Squire Gill.
Ditto.
Ditto.
Happy Thanksgiving and congratulations Bo, take care of yourself, uh, and, uh...
Thank you, Squire Blackford, Squire Downey.
Happy Thanksgiving. Uh, I guess Bo will be severely missed. Um, before we meet again, uh, next Saturday, uh, December sixth, we're having our annual Kiwanis Club Pancake Breakfast from eight to eleven at the First Christian Church. A lot of other downtown Christmas, uh, activities going on, but pancake breakfast, uh, usually kicks things off that Saturday, so welcome everyone to come on down. Thank you.
Thank you Squire Downey. Uh, Squire Brown?
Can you hear me now?
Now we see, now we see, now we see.
Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you Squire Brown. And I would, thank you, and I, and I would have the record reflect that Squire Brown was present and, uh, on camera.
And seen.
And I, I just want to, uh, take a moment on behalf of the fiscal court to express our gratitude and our thanks to all of our county employees who does, do such a great job. It's a reminder of cooperation, unity and a shared purpose, that working together works, just like the Native Americans and the pilgrims and the first Thanksgiving came together, set aside their differences and contributed their unique skills and resources to having a successful event. That's what we pride ourselves in county government. Whether you're in the road department, the courthouse, EMS or anywhere in between, we are a family of county employees and when we, uh, have folks like Bo Wilson who leave our family of employees, we want to honor and recognize them and particularly say thank you. Thank you for your hard work, thank you for your sac- sacrifice, thank you for your dedication on behalf of Woodford County. We all do this for varying reasons, but I believe in Woodford Ca- Woodford County, the most important is family. Uh, your families are important. They allow you to serve our community as fiscal court members. Our county employees' families allow them to serve and many of them sacrifice on behalf of their families so that they can serve. So I want to thank you to your families, to the county employees' families and all the Woodford County families out there who allow us to do this work. I wish you a happy, a safe, a plentiful and fruitful Thanksgiving. We would keep in mind that we know that there are folks that are struggling for this Thanksgiving where the bountiful meals on some of our tables will not reach every table. We want to thank the Woodford County Food Pantry and all those serving needs in our community. Uh, as we return from our holiday break, I know that we look to take up some areas where we can, the fiscal court can help those who are in need of assistance. So I wish you a happy Thanksgiving, thanks for all you do. Thank you to Woodford County, thank you to the good Lord above and God bless you. We are adjourned.